Counselor Baker. Counselor Siomo.
President.
Counselor Flaherty. Counselor Jackson.
Here.
Counselor Lamatina. Counselor Linehan.
Here.
Counselor McCarthy.
Here.
Counselor Murphy.
Here.
Counselor O'Malley.
Here.
Counselor Presley. Counselor Wu. Counselor Yancy. And Counselor Zakeum. Mr. President, we do have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I've been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. I would ask at this time for all councilors and guests to please rise. And I would ask Counselor O'Malley to come to the podium and introduce today's clergy for our invocation. Once the invocation is delivered, I would ask that all members and guests remain standing as Counselor O'Malley leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Counselor O'Malley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good afternoon, colleagues. It is my distinct honor to introduce our clergy member today. The Reverend Annie Rousseau is the Community Minister of Hope Central Church in Jamaica Plain, which is a wonderful, terrific spiritual community, which I invite everyone to attend a service there if you haven't already. Many of you know Reverend Rousseau. She has been a tireless, progressive activist and leader on issues from fairness and equality to housing. In addition to being an incredible activist, she also works for the Boston Metropolitan Housing Partnership. And she and her family are dear friends to me. I've brought her every year since I've been on the council, and as long as she keeps saying yes, she will make that return of parents. But she's just a tremendous individual, real leader, and a bright light in this city that we all love so well. So please join me in welcoming Reverend Annie Rousseau.
Thank you, Counselor O'Malley. Let us pray. God of every time and every place, grant us quiet hearts hushed by compassion for one another, so that all we do and say is shaped by love. We give you thanks for all the blessings that come from your hand, especially for the invitation to live as your holy people. We pray today for the world, a world that is dedicated to wealth and possessions instead of equality and justice. We pray for all nations overwhelmed by war, violence, and injustice. Grant us your vision of peace and righteousness. We pray for the sick and those facing death. Send your spirit and your people to give comfort and hope. Bless these public servants that stand before you today and all those who set aside their private pursuits to serve the public good of all. Give them the wisdom to discern that larger good, gladness in seeking it and serving it, realization that since we are all inescapably connected, we are also accountable to each other and to this earthly home we share. Give them courage enough to take the small daily steps toward fulfilling your grand dream for us all. May they be given the power of discernment to know what is right and good for all the citizens of Boston. Inspire them so that they may be the source of bold ideas. Grace them with sensitivity so that they may be compassionate leaders of our city. We ask your blessing too on their families, colleagues, and dedicated staff that supports them in their work. God of mercy, together with you and with each other, we strive to build a city where diversity is a source of enrichment, neighborhoods are respected and made strong, communities become more inclusive, a city that is beautiful, true, and worthy of your generosity to us. Amen.
Thank you, Reverend Annie Rousseau, for your inspiring message and beautiful prayer. Counselor O'Malley?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Reverend Annie Rousseau, and thank you, Counselor O'Malley, for your introduction and for leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. We have quite a busy presentation schedule here today. Generally, we only have one or two, but today we will have more, and I just want to have an opportunity to let everybody be recognized at today's meeting. But first of all, we have the 2015 Shattuck Award recipient. And the Shattuck Awards are granted to those individuals who work for the city of Boston and have made a life's commitment to improving things, to improving their department, to improving Boston for all of us and for all the citizens. We had a nice presentation ceremony earlier in the Curly Room, at the James Michael Curly Room, and recognized individually, all the councilors spoke to the recipients. So at this time, I'd like to thank the Municipal Research Bureau for continuing to recognize public servants and what they do and the hard work and dedication that they provide the services for all of our citizens. I'd like the recipients, if they would, to come on up, and then we'll take a group photo with all the city councilors here at the DS. Are we here? No, to my right. Councilors, you want to join us? Please. Come on up, Steve, right up. Everybody come right up, and all the recipients line right up in here, and the councilors will line up behind you and beside you. Does anybody want to say a few words on behalf of the recipients? No way. Just to say a few words on behalf of the recipients. Okay, they're a quiet group, they're a dedicated group, they're the hottest working group that we're recognizing. Yep, as Counselor McCarthy said, we need to get them back to work. Am I standing in front of anybody? Please. Right. Right. Let's give them a big hand, the 2015 recipients. Counselor Wu. I've asked Counselor Wu to come to the DS to also recognize a group that is with us here today. We had a recognition and celebration in the Curly Room and also one in the Piemonte Room. Counselor Wu.
And if Counselor Presley also comes up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And Counselor McCarthy. Thank you.
And Counselor McCarthy and Counselor Presley.
Thank you, Mr. President. We are honored today to host the organizers and models involved in two very important causes. There's the Walk to End Lupus and Runway for Mom, both events happening this Saturday, one in the morning, the walk in the morning, and the fashion show in the evening to raise funds for breast cancer awareness and to fight lupus. So I want to thank all of the models for joining us today. We had a very nice ceremony earlier in the Piemonte Room and wanted to also hand it over to my co-sponsors of this, Counselor McCarthy and Counselor Presley.
Thank you for including me and for the opportunity to honor the good work of these women. I just want to, you know, join my colleagues in celebrating you, congratulating you, and thanking you for all you're doing to raise awareness, but also to build a community to support survivors and those who have overcome, and also to support those that are still suffering. So God bless and congratulations, and look forward to your event.
I'll be very brief. Just thank you very much for being up here, and clearly, this is the best-looking group we've had up in this day in a long, long time.
Thank you.
At this time, get a little order here. I'd like to ask Counselor Yancy to come to the DS so that he can make a presentation. Is Ed Gary here? Please come to the DS.
I want to ask Ed Gary Jr. to join us at this time. Well, Mr. President, I feel very comfortable up here. Take your time, Ed.
Don't get too comfortable.
Take your time. Don't be scared. Be afraid. While Ed Gary is finding his way to the podium, I just want to thank him and his mother for a mother-in-law for all that they've done. In fact, is it okay to invite them up?
Absolutely.
Barbara Connie, can you come and join us, please? And Ed Siniff, and other, Gretchen is not here at this time, but she's certainly played a major role in his life. It's my honor to recognize Edward Gary Jr. He's a man committed to his community and works hard at what he does. He was born at the St. Margaret's Hospital in Dorchester, a graduate of the Boston Public School System, graduated from the Bunker Hill Community College. Of course, he had A-plus averages, high honors, and Computer Technology Network options. Also a member of Alpha Kappa Mu Honor Society, has University of Massachusetts Bachelor's of Vat of the College of Community Service Programs. Ed currently serves as the Deputy Director of Communications and External Affairs Division of the Suffolk County Sheriff's Department. He is a software expert who has worked his way up from public information to Deputy Director in the Sheriff's Department. He manages the daily operations and produces a weekly BNN TV cable show, maintains the division's website, Facebook, YouTube, Twitter, Instagram, and all community relations. I really need you on my team, Ed. He has also been a volunteer, and he sets a fine example for every resident of the city of Boston. Serves as President of the Fields Corner Civic Association, and under his leadership, the association was awarded the National Night Out Top Crime Watch Group of the Year for the city of Boston. He also is a clerk for the Dorchester Day Parade Committee, so he made sure that each of us paid our dues when we walked in the Dorchester Parade. He also chaired the Dorchester Parade Committee's Essay Contest, and is a member of the Dorchester Tree Lighting Holiday Celebration Committee. As Vice President of the Fields Corner Main Streets Board of Directors, he's been able to inspire business development in Fields Corner and encourage all of the merchants in that area to participate in the beautification and development of Fields Corner. A member of the Board's 16 Democratic Committee, and I know that our clerk, Maureen Feeny, is very acquainted with Mr. Gary, in that capacity, and others. Treasurer of the Bunker Hill Community College Alumni Association, a member of the All Dorchester Sports League Board of Directors, crew member for the Mayor's Game of the Week. And I could go on and on and on. He, of course, has received many awards. Some of them include in 2011, the BNN TV Spotlight Producers Award, the 2011 National Academy of Television Arts and Sciences, 34th Boston New England Emmy Award nominee for the Mayor's Game of the Week, and finally, 2012 Boston Main Streets Fields Corner Volunteer of the Year recipient. I could go on and on and on, but we do have a council meeting today. I just want to, on a very personal note, thank Ed Gary Jr. for all his work and his selfless efforts to improve the quality of life for everyone in the city of Boston, and he serves as a model to each and every one of us. So without any further ado, I'd like to present Edward Gary Jr. to say some brief remarks before I give him the City Council Resolution. Ed Gary.
Good afternoon, Council President. Good afternoon, councilors. Good afternoon, family and friends. As many of you are aware, Gretchen is already in Florida, and I'm in transit right now trying to clean up a few pieces so that I can go back and join her down in Florida, where we just bought a house, probably about two months ago. So this, to me, is bittersweet. When I get to Florida, the first thing I'm going to do is see what I can do to become community-involved down there, because as the Counselor Yancy had mentioned, it's in my blood. That's the way I was, that's the way I was raised, and I'm going to continue to give back because it's the right thing to do for the community. We go back a long way, a lot of you councilors that are sitting here right now, we've had a lot of ups and a lot of downs, and I really appreciate the support and the energy and the time that you've given to me, and I'm grateful for receiving this proclamation today. Thank you.
Councilors, would you all come up, please, and we'll take a photo?
Just to make it official, city of Boston, the City Council official resolution. Very resolved that the Boston City Council extends its congratulations to Edward Gary Jr. and recognition of your enthusiasm, commitment, and diligent leadership in successfully performing the volunteer duties and responsibilities as President of the Fields Corner Civic Association, and be it further resolved that the Boston City Council extends its best wishes for continued success, and that this resolution be duly signed by the President of the City Council and attested to by the clerk of the city of Boston. It's my honor and privilege on behalf of not just the City Council, but the city of Boston, to make this presentation to Edward Gary Jr.
Thank you.
Like you very much.
Thank you very much. Ed, wish you the best. Down in Florida. Congratulations. At this time, I'd like to ask Counselor Jackson, please, to come to the DS to make our final presentation here today to Adam Weems. Is Adam here? Adam, come up. Counselor Jackson.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I am very, very excited, and in fact, I'm ecstatic, to be able to acknowledge what we do right in the city of Boston. Oftentimes, in this body, we focus on gaps, we focus on things that need to be fixed. Well, ladies and gentlemen, nothing needs to be fixed with Adam Weems. He is a graduate of Madison Park Vocational Technical High School. He is 26 years old, and he is the executive chef at the Lenox Hotel in the city of Boston. I had the occasion of having some adult beverages with him the other day. He's an adult. And we actually watched the Patriots game. We ran into each other on Boylston Street, and it was interesting to me that when I looked at his journal, the journal that he was carrying, on the cover, it said, "You can do anything." And he has shown that a young man can move mountains, a young man can pay his dues, and actually run not only one hotel, but he actually is responsible for three hotels and a new one that is actually opening at 26 years old. In addition, and his mom and his grandmom are over there beaming in the audience. I would just say also, there's a saying that says, "Be who you needed when you were young." There's also a saying that says, "You need to lift as you climb," and he is doing that. So I said, "Hey, Adam, you know, we should go back and do some stuff at Madison." He says, "I go back every single month. What are you talking about?" And the students from the culinary program from Madison Park are actually in the audience. I want to acknowledge them also. And just lastly, I think it's awesome to not only dream it, not only aspire it, but to actually be able to see what success looks like early on in life. And so, again, I'm just so, so happy. I learned about this online. I saw an article about him, and I told Michelle, my chief of staff, I was like, "Get me the number to that hotel. I'm going to pick up the phone, and we're going to acknowledge this young man." I also just want to note, at a time when people are so cynical about public service, at a time when people are so cynical about the great work that's happening in the Boston Public Schools every single day, and the people who work so hard, it is so awesome to see what's on the other side of the rainbow, to see what happens when we fund it the right way, when they have great, dedicated teachers who do the right thing by these young people. When we do that, we actually not only have one Adam Weems, but we have 57,000 Adam Weems in the city of Boston, and that's, to me, what we should be working on every single day. So I just want to, I want to thank these two women here, Mom and Grandma. I want to thank Tanya Larkin for, at Madison Park Vocational Technical High School, and I'll just tell you, he was offered a scholarship from another program, and they gave him a hard time. Even though he had the scholarship in hand, they wanted to make him do something extra, even though he had already paid his dues and he had already worked. And she was there for him and guided him in the right direction, and this young man took this job, I'm not even going to say the other really, really nice institution that he said no to, but he actually said no to a top-tier chain in the city of Boston that's building something new. And again, this is what success looks like, and this is literally what it's all about in the city of Boston around public education and what we can and should be doing on a regular basis. So I just want Adam to come forward. So he talked to me for the whole game, and then now I'm sure he's going to pretend like he's shy, but again, this is a young man who, on a day-to-day basis, works in the kitchen, directing 50 people who are all older than him, and that's only in his kitchen. He has multiple kitchens around the city of Boston. I give to you the incomparable, the bad brother, Adam Weems. Just want to say thank you to everyone, and I want all the students from Madison to keep pushing and follow your dreams. You make anything happen. Thank you. And so I will read the official recognition. It's an official resolution. Says, "Be it resolved that the Boston City Council extends its congratulations to Adam Weems in recognition of his trailblazing culinary career and new title as executive chef at the Lenox Hotel, in addition to his dedication to the community of Roxbury since his time at Madison Park Vocational Technical High School, to his current role as a mentor who inspires our students to accomplish future career aspirations, and be it further resolved that the Boston City Council declares today, October 21st, as Adam Weems Day in the city of Boston." Mr. President, we will request that we actually, as a council, get to test how great of a chef that he is at some point in the very near future.
All right. Congratulations. Thank you, Counselor Jackson. Thank you to the Weems family and to the educators at Madison Park, and also to Adams. Adam. Thank you all for the presentations here today. It's an honor, as the President, to have the opportunity to present so many capable and achieving people throughout our city. Madam Clerk, approval of the- and expend a grant in the amount of $53,730 from the Office of Violence Against Women via the Massachusetts Executive Office of Public Safety and Security. This FY15 VAWA STOP Grant made award is made for the purpose of continuing to fund civilian domestic violence advocacy position, which is responsible for serving victims in the areas of East Boston and Jamaica Plain.
Counselor Murphy.
Mr. President, thank you. At this time, I'd like to move suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1658. Obviously, it's a serious issue of violence against women, so holding a hearing and holding up the money would probably be the wrong move at this time. This is an FY15 continuation grant that funds a civilian domestic violence advocate for the neighborhoods of East Boston and Jamaica Plain. So at this time, I'd like to move suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1658. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Murphy. Counselor Murphy moves suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1658. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1658 has passed. Counselor Presley.
I missed my moment. I move for reconsideration of docket number 1657. Thank you very much. I move to suspend the rules and pass docket 1658, authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend funds totaling $180,000 received from individuals, organizations, local and private businesses for the purposes of funding the Immigrant Integration and Empowerment Initiative, the New American Library Corners Initiative, Immigration Advice Clinics, and the English for New Bostonians Initiative in order to make these resources available for upcoming events. There are five programs that will be funded by this grant. We Are Boston Anniversary Gala, Immigrant Integration and Empowerment Initiative, the New Americans Library Corners Initiative, Immigration Advice Clinics, and again, the English for New Bostonians Initiative, all worthy endeavors deserving of this investment. And I move for suspension and passage.
Counsel Pressley moves suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1657. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1657 has passed. Madam Clerk.
Docket number 1659, message and order to declare surplus city-owned former Public Works Department parcel property known as Washburn Street, Dorchester, 711 square feet of vacant land to transfer care, custody, management, and control of said property to the Public Facilities Commission.
Could you also read 1660, ma'am?
Thank you, Mr. President. Docket number 1660, message and order to declare surplus city-owned Public Works Department parcel property known as Howell Street, Dorchester, 1,288 square feet of vacant land, district to transfer care, custody, management, and control of said property to the Facilities Commission.
Docket 1659 and 1660 will be assigned to the Committee on Economic Development, Planning, and Labor. Madam Clerk.
Docket 1661. Communication was received from the Massachusetts Department of Transportation regarding the plan bearing a certificate that the Highway Division has abandoned a section of the state highway.
1661 will be placed on file.
Docket 1662, notice was received from the mayor of his absence from the city from 7:00 a.m. Saturday to October 17, 2015 until 4:00 p.m. Tuesday, October 20, 2015.
Docket 1662 will be placed on file.
Mr. President, would you like me to read 1663 through 1665? Thank you. Docket number 1663, notice was received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting of September 16, 2015. Docket number 1664, notice was received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting of September 30, 2015. And docket number 1665, notice was received from the city clerk in accordance with Chapter 6 of the ordinances of 1979 regarding action taken by the mayor on papers acted upon by the city council at its meeting of October 7, 2015.
Docket 1663, 1664, and 1665 will be placed on file.
I'll read the next three.
The next three, 1666 through 68.
Thank you. Docket number 1666, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Jane Moss as a member of the Back Bay Architectural Commission for a term expiring December 31, 2019. Docket number 1667, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of John Christensen as a member of the Back Bay Architectural Commission for a term expiring December 31, 2018. And docket number 1668, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Patricia Quinn as a member of the Back Bay Architectural Commission for a term expiring December 31, 2018. And docket number 1668, notice was received from the mayor of the appointment of Patricia Quinn as a member of the Back Bay Architectural Commission for a term expiring December 31, 2018.
Docket 1666, 1667, and 1668 will be placed on file. Madam Clerk, matters recently heard for possible action, please.
Docket number 1406, message and order authorizing the Transportation Department to accept and expend a grant not to exceed $666,740 from the Federal Highway Administration passed through the Massachusetts Department of Transportation known as MAS-DOT to be used to fund 80% of the design and engineering service costs for traffic management improvements at 15 intersections in the area of Blue Hill Avenue and Warren Street.
Chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on City Neighborhood Services and Veterans Affairs, Counselor McCarthy.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. A week ago today, we had a hearing on docket number 1406. This is additional money from the feds fed through MAS-DOT to continue the work of Blue Hill Ave., on Blue Hill Ave. and Warren Streets. This is now in design, it's about 80% design. This money will be used directly towards completing the design and getting shovels in the ground in FY18. I look to have the suspension of the rules and passage of docket number 1406.
Thank you, Counsel McCarthy. Counselor Jackson.
Thank you very much. I want to thank Counsel McCarthy for his hard work on this, also for a speedy hearing. If any of you have come from Mattapan to, to the intersection of Warren Street and Blue Hill Ave., it is a new day in the City of Boston, ladies and gentlemen. All of those folks who used to go on 95 and go around the city, absolutely all of them are actually driving up Blue Hill Avenue now. We've always known it was the fastest way. I don't know who told them, but they actually know now. So it is, it is critical that we retime the lights, that we look at the intersections, and that we actually look at public safety for pedestrians who are going to be crossing. So I think a really good time to do this and I really want to, want to thank the Chair of this committee for his hard work. Thank you so much and I'll be voting in affirmative.
Thank you, Counsel Jackson. Counsel McCarthy moves acceptance of his committee report and passage of docket 1406. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1406 has passed.
Docket number 1267, audit for hearing regarding pilot contributions by higher and medical education institutions.
That matter will remain in committee. Madam Clerk.
Motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. Motion, order.
I'm getting there, Madam Clerk.
I'm sorry.
Okay. More motions, orders, and resolutions.
Docket number 1669, Counsel Baker offered the following resolution recognizing the service and sacrifice of Bol Slav Vekunis in World War II with the dedication of a hero square at the intersection of Sudan Street and Dorchester Avenue.
Chair recognizes Counsel Baker on docket 1669.
Thank you, Mr. President. First was put in your pack and I would also like to suspend the rules and pass. This is a pretty straightforward hero square on Dorchester Avenue, Sudan Street.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Baker. The changing of the rules, it all, of the language, Madam Clerk, is it adoption or pass?
It's move for substitution.
Okay, so that's what we have. Counsel Baker moves suspension of the rules and adoption of docket 1669. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1669 has been adopted.
Docket number 1670, Counsel LaMettina offered the following audit for hearing regarding notification of parking restrictions.
Chair recognizes Counsel LaMettina on 1670.
To have a hearing to discuss expanded city notification and alerts concerning parking restrictions. As you know, parking is an important concern for the residents of the City of Boston and this administration has made great strides in utilizing technology to inform residents of parking restrictions and also provide notice by signage. However, in my district, many residents do not use their cars every day and when they park their cars, hopefully it's legally, and then they come to find out there's a temporary signage, particularly we saw this during moving day where because of the temporary signs, they were towed. So what I'm looking to do is just to have a hearing to examine additional ways so we can alert residents of these temporary parking restrictions and look to expand the notification process. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel LaMettina. Would you please add my name, Madam Clerk, and add Counsel Siomos, Counsel Flaherty's, Counsel Yancey's name, Counsel Zecham, Counsel Romali, Counsel McCarthy, Counsel Murphy, Counsel Pressley? All right. Add those names and that docket will be placed in the City of Neighborhood Services, the Committee on Neighborhood Services and Veterans Affairs. Did you want to speak? Oh, Madam, Counsel Wu. You just wanted to add your name? Yeah. And please add Counsel Wu's name, Madam Clerk. Did you get that? Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk. Oh, you did add Counsel Wu's name? Okay, thank you.
I'm sorry.
Did you want to speak? Okay.
Okay.
All right. One of those days.
Docket number 1671. Was that the same? No, it hasn't.
Yes, I did, but docket 1670 is assigned to the Committee on City and Neighborhood Services and Veterans Affairs.
Thank you very much, Mr. President.
It is my pleasure, Madam Clerk.
Sorry about this. 1671, Counsel LaMettina and Linehan offered the following ordinance regarding street performers in the City of Boston.
Chair recognizes Counsel LaMettina on docket 1671.
Thank you, Mr. President. The purpose of this ordinance is to have reasonable regulation for street performers in the City of Boston in order to ensure access to public areas for all. This is an issue that I have been working on for the last few years in regards to numerous complaints that I have received, both from residents and performers. This proposal is not anti-street performers, but is rather helping street performers from getting bullied as well as residents being solicited. We have received several complaints from both, I said, street performers, residents who have felt harassed and threatened from some of the other performances that are utilizing public space, particularly in the Faneuil Hall area. Many residents have also complained about noise issues as well. In fact, there was an email from a tourist who was sent to the mayor's office the other day referring some of the issues that I'm concerned about. This audit is designed to help performers work with the city to share space and abide by the rules involving noise, pedestrian access, and solicitation. This proposal would ensure equal access for street performers while maintaining accessibility for public places. Mr. President, for years, I've been trying to deal with some of the issues over there. They always, the previous administration always told me that, there was a memo, which I have a copy of, that there was nothing we could do, that they have the right. I've been working with street performers to come up with this ordinance, similar to an ordinance that they do, they have in Cambridge. I think it's the right thing to do. I'm just looking forward to having a hearing, a working hearing to discuss some of the issues out there so it'll make it much easier for our performers to go to Faneuil Hall and be able to have a variety of street performers. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Counsel LaMettina, and thank you for allowing me to co-sponsor that with you, Counsel McCarthy.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, and thank you and Counsel LaMettina for bringing this up. Counsel LaMettina and I, and you as well, have had this conversation many times. I think it's really time that we have this, this hearing. This clearly is not anti-art and it's certainly not anti-street performers. I think that the Faneuil Hall marketplace, that's a part of, really a part of our fabric. But what this is about, for me anyway, is offensive language, offensive music, the music that's so loud that you can't walk by without, you know, you can't even have a conversation in Faneuil Hall. And what it's doing is it's taking away from Faneuil Hall, not adding to it. So I'm looking forward to working with the performers as well as the city, try to figure out exactly, you know, how we can regulate and make everything better for the performers as well as our visitors from around the world. And I look forward to having the hearing and please add my name.
Thank you, Counsel McCarthy. Counsel Pressley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Very much appreciate the framing that this is in no way anti-street performer, anti arts. In the same way that we are negotiating how do we coexist and share our roadways, we also, it's certainly beneficial to have a discussion about how we coexist and share our public spaces. But certainly, our street performers are catalysts for economic vitality, our creative economy, they incentivize foot traffic. And I would argue that, you know, very often, although we champion the arts and want the benefits of the arts, we're not always creating a climate that supports the actual artists, especially in affording to live in this city. Many of them are busking and are in Faneuil Hall because they can't make a living any other way. This is a way in which, you know, that for many, this is how they make a living. So we have to find a way to coexist and I just want to thank our street performers for all that they contribute to the vitality and the vibrancy of our city and for incentivizing foot traffic into Faneuil Hall when for many years it was depressed and people were not shopping, were not patronizing there. So you're an incredible asset to our city and we thank you for your creative contributions and do appreciate the opportunity for us to have a discussion about how we can coexist. So, thank you.
I thank you, Counsel Pressley. Counsel Wu.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank the two sponsors of this for bringing this issue to the council and especially to Counsel LaMettina for his work over several years on this. I just want to note that as someone who came, became interested in government simply because I was so frustrated about permitting and licensing for my small business, anytime I see more permitting, I get a little bit, just a little bit cautious. Now, I, Counsel LaMettina shared with me one of the emails that came in about this, some really incredibly inappropriate, horrible, racist, very inappropriate behavior that we don't want to see on our city streets. So my perspective in all this will be, how can we make sure that our streets are welcoming but not writing policy for, you know, very, for a potentially small group of bad apples that would have effect citywide? As Arts and Culture Committee Chair, I've heard from performers and artists and everyone that we need to have more and we need to make people unafraid of participating and performing. So this will be a great conversation. I look forward to participating and thank you again.
Thank you, Counsel Wu. Counsel Jackson.
and I would argue that, you know, very often although we champion the arts and want the benefits of the arts, we're not always creating a climate that supports the actual artists, especially in affording to live in this city. Many of them are busking and are in Faneuil Hall because they can't make a living any other way. This is a way in which, you know, for many, this is how they make a living. So we have to find a way to coexist, and I just want to thank our street performers for all that they contribute to the vitality and the vibrancy of our city and for incentivizing foot traffic into Faneuil Hall when for many years it was depressed, and people were not shopping, were not patronizing there. So you're an incredible asset to our city, and we thank you for your creative contributions, and I do appreciate the opportunity for us to have a discussion about how we can coexist. So, thank you.
I thank you, Council Presley. Council Wu?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank the two sponsors of this for bringing this issue to the council, and especially to Council La Matina for his work over several years on this. I just want to note that as someone who came, became interested in government simply because I was so frustrated about permitting and licensing for my small business, anytime I see more permitting, I get a little bit, just a little bit cautious. Now, Council La Matina shared with me one of the emails that came in about this, some really incredibly inappropriate, horrible, racist, very inappropriate behavior that we don't want to see on our city streets. So my perspective in all this will be, how can we make sure that our streets are welcoming, but not writing policy for, you know, very, for a potentially small group of bad apples that would have effect citywide? As Arts and Culture Committee Chair, I've heard from performers and artists and everyone that we need to have more, and we need to make people unafraid of participating and performing. So this will be a great conversation. I look forward to participating, and thank you again.
Thank you, Council Wu. Council Jackson?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I rise to just say caution. First, I want to caution us that when we speak about offensive language in the United States of America, this, the First Amendment, and some things that we actually find to be offensive actually are covered by, by the First Amendment. And there is a great deal of case law that actually supports buskers relative to their First Amendment rights. In addition, I think we also need to look at arts and culture, not only as cute or only arts and culture, its employment for people. There are many people who are professional artists and literally would not have a job or a way to take care of themselves or their family, be it not for what they do on a day-to-day basis. And so I think, in terms of the types of music and the types of speech, the great part about the United States of America is that you actually, as repulsive as some things are, you actually get to say what's on your mind, as Donald Trump. And so, we, we, we should, I think we as a, as a body, and I agree with Council Wu, we live in a place, and I, it scares me that the Public Works Department would be the department to be connecting with artists. That actually really does scare me. I, I think that we should be looking at this through the lens, to me, of a Bill of Rights, a Bill of Rights for street performers, that actually speaks through to the, the rights that should be there, rather than from a regulatory lens. I do want to thank my, my colleagues for bringing this up. It's important. And it got brought up with Ashkenazi, right? So these are folks who we gave, and I've heard Council Murphy speak about an organization that we gave, we sign off on a contract, and then they go and do, do wrong by folks. I want us to be cautious to not step in to the same pile of Ashkenazi that is, that is out there. I think, again, these individuals make our city better, and they're really the character of the city of Boston. And I, I think the one other piece I would note is that when we look at, when businesses were shut down in Faneuil Hall, and that's the same thing for, I'm sorry, for the push carts. I don't mean to bring, bring it all in there, but folks, when there was nothing but a cell phone store up in, up in downtown, folks with a push cart and some folks with a, with a boombox and some love for music were doing their thing. I see hundreds of people who are being entertained, and, and the great part about street performing, that's a little bit different than other places, is that you can actually vote with your feet. When the performance doesn't work for you, you get to walk away. So I think we should really proceed with caution in terms of the regulatory environment for these individuals who are, I believe, add to the city of Boston, and also think about the environment that we create with all of the colleges and universities, and the amazing musical talent that we have in the city of Boston. Thank you so much for this opportunity, Mr. President. I look forward to the hearing, but proceed with caution.
Thank you, Council Jackson. Council Zakim?
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to thank you and Council La Matina for bringing this important matter forward. I will leave specifics on the First Amendment issues, I think, to the hearing where we'll hear from lawyers far more learned than I, and I'll say my other colleagues who are lawyers here, we may not be experts in this field, but it is an important consideration. I'm glad Council Jackson raised it. I would say, while we talk over and over about encouraging the arts and the commerce that brings in the city, we do need to proceed with caution on this, and it would be my, my hope that we think more about this on a broader scale on access, and as Council Presley said, sharing our sidewalks as well as we're talking about shared streets for performers, for residents, for tourists, for people who are patronizing many of our businesses across the city, for the disabled community that sometimes, you know, these obstructions that I think I certainly don't take as seriously because I can sort of just, you know, slide around them, making sure that we're really focusing on that. And when people are setting up, whether it's in Faneuil Hall or in Copley Square or by the library in Copley, which I would also throw in, I think it is important to look at the use of these spaces, not just for performing, but where we have skateboarders and rollerbladers who are not just passing through in transit, but sort of making some of these public spaces we have arenas, so to speak, for tricks that I think are certainly more dangerous and can be more disruptive to people on the streets. So I applaud this hearing order. I look forward to getting into it, and just a little forewarning, I'm going to bring up a little bit more about the physical access issues as much as I think, on two fronts, I think, as a regulatory body, we might have more success regulating that than the content, but also I think it's, for me, walking through the neighborhoods that I represent, that is the biggest issue I see with performance, with other use of the sidewalk. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Zakim. Council Yancy?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. One of the disadvantages of coming near to last, if not last, is that much has already been said about the topic, and I ascribe myself quite frankly to many of the comments of my colleagues. The only thing I want to add is that, the obvious, that is, we live in a very diverse city, a city that has become a destination for nationalities from literally all over the world, and we should celebrate that diversity. We should also recognize, as has already been mentioned, that many of these street performers actually add in a positive way to the ambiance of the city we know as Boston. We may not always understand the art that's on display, but we should embrace it and encourage it, just as we've already demonstrated our support for the Caribbean Carnival that attracts more than half a million people to the heart of the city of Boston every year. We celebrate gay pride in the annual parade, St. Patrick's Day, and celebrations which installs the virtue of arts coming from virtually every nation around the world. So we do have to proceed with caution, but we also have to recognize that without the willingness of these performers to take substantial risk, and I, I've seen some of the performances substantial physical risk to entertain the public, that, you know, we should be supportive and, and find out what we can do to make it easier, not more difficult, for us to have this type of entertainment in the city of Boston. My only regret, Mr. President, is that we don't have performers in every neighborhood of the city of Boston. They seem to be concentrated in certain areas, and I'd like to encourage them to take a look at continuing where they are, but also look at opportunities for expansion so we can make other parts of the city of Boston real destinations the way they've done for Faneuil Hall and other places. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Council Yancy. Hold your applause. Thank you. Docket 1671 is assigned to the Committee on Government Operations. Madam Clerk, personnel orders, please.
Docket number 1672, Council Linehan.
Council McCarthy moves suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1672. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1672 has passed.
Docket number 1673, Council Linehan.
Council McCarthy moves suspension of the rules and passage of docket 1673. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Docket 1673 has passed. Madam Clerk, there are no late filings. Okay. Is anybody wishing to remove a matter from the green sheets may do so at this time. Council McCarthy?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I would like to remove docket number 1430. It's on page four of 16.
Would you like me to read it into the record, President?
Good.
In the committee, is it 1430?
1430, Madam Clerk, yes.
In the Committee on City and Neighborhood Services and Veterans Affairs, docket number 1430, sponsored by Councilor O'Malley, resolution urging utility regulators to ensure that Boston residents have access to FiOS. It was referred to committee on September 2, 2015. It was a hearing on October 14, 2015.
The matter is appropriate, appropriately before the body. Council McCarthy, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'm looking to have this docket number 1430 suspended and passed, but through the chair, the sponsor of the document, Council O'Malley, certainly would like to have something to say.
Thank you, Council McCarthy. Councilor O'Malley?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I often have something to say, so I appreciate you introducing me. This is a resolution that I filed on August 26. It was officially before, introduced before this body on September 2. I believe every one of you co-sponsored it. A hearing was held through the leadership of Council McCarthy and the Committee on City and Neighborhood Services and Veterans Affairs on Wednesday, October 14. It was a very well-attended hearing. There was participation from many, if not most of you, and I know all staffs were present monitoring it. The speakers at the hearing included Joshia Franklin-Hodge, who's the Chief Information Technology Officer for the city of Boston, as well as Mike Lynch, who runs the city's cable office, Peter Bowman, who is the Vice President of Government Affairs for Verizon, and Stephanie Lee, who is the Regional Director for Public Affairs, also for Verizon, and then Ed Hastings and Paul Feeney, two members of the leadership of IBEW 2222, all testified. While it's a resolution, and typically we don't have a hearing before a resolution, this is something that I purposely wanted to have the opportunity to have a formal setting. And I do want to commend Verizon for showing up. They knew it would be a tough room, and it certainly was, and I do appreciate their being here to answer some questions. It was obviously enormously disappointing to hear them officially say that there was no plan to expand the FiOS fiber optic network in the city of Boston. Currently, there are some parts of Dorchester where it is available, as well as some parts in the South Boston waterfront, in the Seaport District. It's about 2,400 buildings in Boston where it's currently being deployed. You know, I, I was disappointed in Verizon's response, but I was also really gratified to hear Mayor Walsh through Joshia and, and Mr. Lynch talk about the desire to build a, and to, to, not to build, but to bring fiber optic technology and real broadband to the city of Boston. If it can't be Verizon, we are certainly looking elsewhere. There are a number of other companies. We could go with Google Fiber, for example. Some other municipalities have built their own municipal, municipal broadband network. What we currently have, what I have, and I would venture guess most of you have, is DSL lines, and that does not meet the minimum speed to qualify as broadband by the FCC. The Department of Innovation Technology is currently mapping underground conduit and fiber optics to be used by the city or a private company. Joshia spoke at great length about ways the city can incentivize a company like Verizon or others to build here. And this is not only about helping our consumers, this is not only a consumer protection issue and offering real competition to ratepayers, although that's important, it's also about making sure that businesses, the colleges, the universities, the hospitals have access to high-speed fiber optic networks. So while it was disappointing to hear that Verizon was not looking to expand, there are other, are other options. This will be a lengthy process, but I know that Mayor Walsh and his team, and I know that all of us are committed to finding something that works, so it was a worthwhile hearing. For that, I would ask that we pass this resolution and continue to work. I think this body can take a real leadership role, not only closing that digital divide, but making sure that we're able to, to help students, to help businesses, to help hospitals thrive in this great city. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you to the chairman for his leadership on this issue.
Thank you, Council O'Malley. Council Baker?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to commend First and Maker, and also Council McCarthy for, for his, for his hearing well-run. Make no mistake about it, this is a company that makes a billion dollars a month. Their, their, their investment into Boston would be about 500 million, but that would be returned out to them. They enjoy, they enjoy status of a utility company, and I, for me, I don't think that they're showing the city of Boston the respect that we deserve. We should have FiOS in this, in this country. This is, to me, looks like a union busting plan underway here, because if they did, if they did approve the FiOS plan in Boston, the men and women of 2222 that they have on the ropes right now would have to come back in and do all this work. So this is union busting at its finest, in my opinion, and I, I wanted to get up and just state my opinion. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Council Baker. Council Jackson?
Thank you very, very much. I, I also want to note that they don't actually pay taxes on the polls. That is still at, at the State House, and there are many places where, that they are taxed and actually have lower rates than, than the city of Boston. I think the other piece that we also need to begin to look at are technologies outside of them. There are wireless broadband. There are many developing countries that have actually moved towards that, and also broadband over power lines, which is another thing that people are considering. So I think we should, if we're looking at it as a city-run or acquired utility, I think we should begin to think outside of the box and think about what is next, not only what we currently have. But I, I too am very disappointed with the lack of, of broadband competition, in particular from Verizon.
Thank you, Council Jackson. Council Yancy?
Thank you, Mr. President. I rise, of course, to support this resolution and commend the maker. The digital divide is a reality in the city of Boston today, and it's our responsibility as the legislators for the city of Boston to address that disparity and inequity, and we should use the, the political and the economic strength of the city of Boston, including city government itself, to ensure that our residents have access to this technology. I am appalled, quite frankly, for any major corporation such as FiOS simply to thumb its nose at the city of Boston, and we're in position to exert some power and influence over this particular company as well as other utilities. So I want to thank the leadership of Mr. O'Malley and ask that we unanimously pass this resolution.
Thank you, Council Yancy. Council McCarthy moves passage, or adoption of docket 1430. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Out the vote, Madam Clerk. Could you please read the roll?
Council Baker? Council Baker, yes. Council Siomo? Council Siomo, yes. Council Flaherty? Council Flaherty, yes. Council Jackson? Council Jackson, yes. Council La Matina? Council La Matina, yes. Council Linehan?
Yes.
Council Linehan, yes. Council McCarthy? Council McCarthy, yes. Council Murphy? Council Murphy, yes. Council O'Malley? Council O'Malley, yes. Council Presley? Council Presley, yes. Council Wu? Council Wu, yes. Council Yancy? Council Yancy, yes. And Council Zakim? Council Zakim, yes. Mr. President, we have a unanimous vote on docket number 1430.
Docket 1430 has been adopted unanimously. There are 10 late-file matters, which in absence of objection, will be added to the consent agenda. Seeing and hearing no objections, the matters are so added. The chair moves adoption of the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and the consent agenda is adopted. Council Siomo, for what purpose do you rise?
Unanimous consent to make a brief statement.
Any objections? No objections. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. On behalf of myself, Council Murphy, and Council Flaherty, just last week, we're going to read her name into the record. Marguerite Fagan came to the Veronica Smith Senior Center in 1993 to volunteer. I had just begun, became the director at the Veronica Smith Senior Center at that time, and we started to discuss her experience and qualification. She served as Kevin White's executive secretary for his entire 16 years in office. She held various high-level positions throughout city government until the day she retired, and when she, when, when we, she just said it in such a matter-of-fact way that I was like, wow, what a score. What kind of volunteer has that kind of qualifications? So she became a surrogate mother to me for those 22 years since, since then, and surrogate grandmother to my, my two boys, and she recently passed away at 91, and she was just so active in the Austin-Brighton community. You, if you were involved in anything in Austin-Brighton, you knew who Marguerite Fagan was, always a beautiful, warm smile, which will be sorely missed. a beautiful, warm smile, which will be sorely missed, and someone that I had the privilege of eulogizing at her funeral. I just wanted to say goodbye, Marguerite. Thank you for everything you did for us, for the community, and rest in peace.
I thank you, Counselor Siomo. I'd ask all guests and all members to please rise as the council prepares to adjourn today's meeting in the memory of the following individuals. For Counselor Siomo, Marguerite C. Fagan. For Counselor Lamatina, David Finnegan. John Acap, John Acapulco. Rose Toscano. Sandra Lee Sitia. For Counselor Linehan and Flaherty, James P. McDeven. For Counselor Presley, Monica Jolivette. For Counselor Yancey, Terrence Yancey, Counselor Yancey's nephew. And for Counselor Zakeham, Joe Rodeo Senior. A moment of silence, please. The chair moves that when the council adjourns today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals, and is scheduled to meet again on Wednesday, October 28 at noon. All those in favor of adjournment say aye. All opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and the council is so adjourned.